My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Yep.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have Coram.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have the common council minutes from May 15th, 2018.
Motion by Aldman Massey, second by Aldman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence?
Tonight we just have one correspondence, it's a thank you letter for the many things that everybody gracious professionalism that was handling through their father's funeral, and that was for Chief Lamarcosso, so, and I put the letter also in everybody's box and also on the city website.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, please chief.
Good evening, council. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Di Stefano, the common council, and the police commission for giving me the opportunity to publicly recognize two members of the police department for their recent promotions. I'd also like to thank the family members, friends, city residents, and various members of the Middletown Police Department that have joined us here this evening to recognize Lieutenant Joseph Tobin and Sergeant Eric Hargett in their achievements. If I could have Lieutenant Tobin, Sergeant Hargett come forward, please. On April 19th, 2018, the City Middletown Police Commission promoted Joseph Tobin, known to us as J., to the rank of lieutenant, and Eric Hargett to the rank of sergeant. Lieutenant Joseph Tobin started his career at MPD on June 11th, 2001, and has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. In 2003, he became our tactical team operator, trained to respond to tactical situations, participating in many operations, including numerous search warrants. In 2005, he was promoted to detective and served in the juvenile aid bureau. In 2006, Lieutenant Tobin became a police instructor and began developing lesson plans and instructing members of our department in basic juvenile procedures. He also trained our entire department and certified them in CPR. In 2008, he was promoted to sergeant and was assigned to oversee the department's juvenile aid and community policing units. In 2010, he was moved to our detective division where he supervised detectives and managed and coordinated major investigations. He returned back to sergeant in patrol division in 2011 and was promoted to lieutenant in April of this year. Over the years, Lieutenant Tobin has been honored with numerous commendations for his excellence in police work. Lieutenant Tobin has proved time and time again his sacrifice and dedication to our department, and we are honored to have him serving as one of our top ranking members of the Middletown Police Department. Sergeant Eric Hargett began his career with MPD on July 14th, 2008, and he has a bachelor's degree in business management. Sergeant Hargett was a very active patrol officer who focused much of his patrol efforts on DWI enforcement. Subsequently, Sergeant Hargett became one of the department's leaders in DWI arrests for several years in a row, and also went on to become an instructor in DWI classes at both the Orange County and the Rockland County Police Academies. Sergeant Hargett was recently assigned to our narcotics unit for over a year. During that time, his supervisor referred to him as the ultimate team player, as he contributed significantly to the efforts in combating drug activity within our community. Sergeant Hargett has also been instrumental to our accreditation process, as he is one of our department's accreditation managers. This is a highly organized position that is responsible for keeping our department up to date and in line with the most updated professional standards and policies put forth by New York State Department of Criminal Justice. Sergeant Hargett is also a certified DRE, which is a Drug Recognition Expert, which is one of the most challenging certifications for a police officer to obtain. He basically is able to recognize and identify drivers that are impaired by drugs. It is with great honor that I commend Sergeant Hargett on his outstanding achievements with our department and his dedicated service over the years. Both of these men have put in countless hours preparing themselves for this opportunity. Not just the long hours they committed to studying for their promotional exams, but the hours, days, and years that they have put forth throughout their careers working towards achieving the departmental goals by making the city of Middletown a safer community. Both Lieutenant Tobin and Sergeant Hargett demonstrated early in their careers their dedication to the City of Middletown Police Department, as well as their desire to move up through the ranks of the police department. They now hold very important leadership positions where they can utilize their strong work ethics and experiences to provide direction and impart knowledge throughout the department. I'm very confident in both Lieutenant Tobin's and Sergeant Hargett's leadership abilities, and I'm confident that they will excel in their new positions. new challenges as you embark upon this next chapter of your career, but I also ensure you that I, as well as other supervisors within our department, will support you and assist you in any way we can. I implore you to stay true to yourselves and to utilize the strong morals and ethics that you have, which have led you here, and please strive for excellence from yourselves as well as from your staff as you work towards achieving the goals of our department, and always remember the oath that you took to protect and serve the people of this community. At this time, I would once again like to thank everyone that came out this evening, and once again congratulate both Lieutenant Joseph Tobin and Sergeant Eric Hargett on their achievements this evening.
They're all afraid of the audit. They're clearing the room.
Good evening, how's everybody tonight? Bill Cochran, Linda Hannigan, and Jonathan Rose are here from RBT Accounting Firm, and they're the accountants we retained last year to replace O'Connor Davies, and they're going to give you an overview of where our statements were. I might add a couple of months early from last year. It was first year, it was a lot of work, and a collaborative effort, including the mayor finding a typo on page three, which was helpful, thank you. And, anyway, Bill Cochran's going to come up and tell you where we're at.
Thank you for allowing us to be part of the city of Middletown. We put that typo on page three, just to make sure you guys read it, right? So, I guess you guys did. Well, Mr. Mayor did. But I'm Bill Cochran, I'm the partner in the governmental sector, and was the partner on the city of Middletown. Linda Hannigan is our director in charge of this year's audit. What I would like to cover tonight are a few things. We're just going to give you, we're going to give you a brief overview and basically tell you the conduct and how the audit went. So the first thing I would like to cover with you is required communication. We are, in accordance with our standards, are required to communicate to you while, after we do an audit, if there were certain things that we have looked at. One is any disagreements that we might have had with management, and there were none. We also look at to see if there's any accounting principles that they may have disagreed with of what we proposed. There were none of those either. Any problems that we might have had conducting the audit during this time, we would also point that out to you, and there were none of those either. Once I go through a few of these reports, I also want to comment on how the actual audit So, when we're looking at financial statements, one of the most important reports is your independent auditor's report, because in that independent auditor's report, we either give you a clean opinion or we don't. Well, you do have a clean opinion, and what that means is that this report lays out what management's responsibilities are. Counsel, you're part of management, right? And what auditor's responsibilities are. We say we're going to audit your financial information in accordance with governmental auditing standards. And doing that, we design procedures, and design procedures to find out whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented, and that's what we did. And at the end, in our opinion, we say that your financial statements are fairly presented. So you do have a clean opinion for the audit. One of the other important reports is a report on internal control over financial reporting, which we are required to do, because you're a municipality, we have to do this under governmental auditing standards. When we do internal controls over financial reporting, we have to determine whether or not your team has the controls in place to be able to accurately give financial results, which you guys can. I would like to thank Don and his team for the help that they provided us. Your team is very, very knowledgeable. There was never really any issues getting information from them. Janet and Don were instrumental, and the rest of the finance team down there, they helped us out with whatever issues we may have had, documentation that we needed, they were very forthcoming, and they did a very, very good job. Any questions on those reports, any of those reports? So, to give you just a synopsis of your finances, right? Usually, I could go through every single number, every single page, and I'm sure you guys don't want me to do that. Don told me not to. All right, so what we do do is we let, you know, how'd the city do, right? How'd the city do? Well, there's a couple of, you know, what's your most important fund, right? It's your general fund, right? Your general fund only went down $400,000, and 150 of that was planned for, but you also look at what kind of fund balance you have. Do you have a sound fund balance, right? You're able to operate the city in an efficient manner, and you have the tools to do that. Another thing I noticed when we were doing the audit is the projects that you guys have going on in the city. You have a lot of capital projects going on in the city. You're trying to, you know, improve infrastructure, you know, save money on, you know, electricity, but you guys have a great capital plan to improve the city of Middletown. And you have monies out there specifically designated to make sure these projects are happening. And I've talked to, when we were going over some of the projects, I talked to some of the team members, you know, and the engineers, or, you know, DPW, or whoever's, you know, running these projects, and they're, they have their hands around them, and it was, you know, it was pretty impressive to see that a city that is actually, you know, has enough, you know, funds and ability to, you know, just keep growing and making things better. So, with that said, if there's any questions of any specifics that are in the financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, we'll be more than happy to answer them, but if later on, when you're reviewing the financial statements, on the cover page in the right bottom corner is contact information, please feel free to give us a call, you give Linda a call, or you give myself a call, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any question from council? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step Okay, remarks to the department head, economic development. See you in the back.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to talk a little bit about, the mayor announced a race for space competition about a week or so ago, and just to let members of the public know that the competition's on for the Woolworths project, for the, to fill the spaces, you could go to our city website, the bid website, or call our department for an application and guidelines. So, the deadline's August 6th for the apps, so we're pretty much off and running with that program right now, which is part of funded through the DRI. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any question for Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm just going to run through a few, some of the projects we're working on, just to keep you updated, you and the public, and then if you have any questions, I'm not going to cover everything. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me, or, you know, ask me now, and we can address them. Start with the milling, roads milling and paving. We're going to be starting our program in July 5th, right after, right after July 4th, obviously. And the reason why we have not published any list of streets yet, roads, even to the elected officials, the mayor has a very preliminary one, is because we're still going back and forth with Orange and Rockland. Because of the issues that were raised by the common council president, the mayor, many of the common council about the quality of the work and all that stuff, that Orange and Rockland lift us with in our streets, Orange and Rockland has decided to take it on their own and come and pave the roads from face of the curb to center line of the road, anywhere that they impacted from last year's work. We've been going back and forth and talking about it, but unfortunately, this did not expedite the matter of resolving the poor condition of our roads. So now, Orange and Rockland, their subcontractor, is scheduled to start on the 25th of this month. We are scheduled to start our own program on the 6th of this month. To try to coordinate the two, so that they can go a little bit ahead of us in there, they were supposed to go ahead of us a long time ago, so that they can restore our roads, it did not happen. So now, you know, we are reverting back to our old agreement with Orange and Rockland, basically, that most of the road that they disturbed last year is probably going to go back under the city's program, so the city will be taking care of these roads. And because coordination will be a nightmare. As an example, North Street, we're going to mill and lower the profile of the road to achieve higher curb reveal in order to maintain the storm sewer in the street. Orange and Rockland, when they come and do half the road only, they're not, they're not required, their contractor, to lower the profile of the road. So I don't want to get into great details, but that's, that's basically where it comes, it becomes a coordination nightmare. So some of the roads is going to stay within the city, so we will be starting our program on the 5th, on the 5th of July. Orange and Rockland will be starting their own milling and paving on the 25th of this month. We don't have, we don't have the final, the roads list pinned down yet. We met with them and their contractors, and our staff, and we're still trying to work it out. So the minute I have this list, and I will okay it with the mayor, and then, and the council president, it's going to be distributed to council members, and then it will be available on our website. Again, we apologize for the delay, but the reason is coordination, to try to get everything covered because of the issues with Orange and Rockland road restoration. But the good news is they are working with us, they dispatch different teams in there, so they're more coordinated, and they want to try to do the right thing. It's just it may not be too timely at this time. Maybe next year it will work a little bit better.
Jacob, Orange and Rockland's going to mill half the road?
Yes, sir.
And then repave it?
Yes, sir. So that, that will apply for definitely a street that they will be taking care of is from Highland Avenue between, between West Main, from West Main to Hanford, is it? Yeah. So that, they will be doing the whole road for us, not only half of it in there, because we met, we met with them and the contractor, he said, I can't leave you with, I'm going to do the whole thing. So that will be done at no cost to us. Center Street will be done, which is the parking lot behind James Street, that will be done by Orange and Rockland. North Street that they dug up, it's not going to be done by them, it's going to be done by us.
What about West Main Street right behind here?
West Main Street, that's going to be done by us. Oh, I'm sorry, West Main Street behind here from, from the collusion center, up north, that's going to be, half the road is going to be done by them, because that, that road has already been milled, the profile has been lowered by us two years ago. So that will be done by them. But North Street, but the issue is they don't want to do anything that's just been done, meaning the paving that they just did this year, not the paving, I'm sorry, the trenching that they've done this year. So they want to sit on it for a couple of more months. So, we're going to be negotiating and talking to them about that. So the program that they'll be doing is anything that they dug, any trenches that they did last year, not the new stuff they're doing now. So, because they want to allow the trench to settle, and the same story, but I see them, I'm watching them, they're paying more attention to tamping and lifts, I've seen them myself, so hopefully it will be. And again, I apologize being too technical and taking a long time, but I know this is a sore subject, and everybody is concerned about it. Maple Avenue and West Main Street, the mayor will be updating about those two projects, Black Dirt Sewer and the Sterling Street. Sterling Street project, the project was sewer line, auditors, we're talking about infrastructure. We've done phase one and phase two, about four and a half million dollars worth of work expenditure is just being completed, and the Black Dirt Sewer, about just under $4 million. So you're talking just under $9 million, the two sewer line projects only. So we had EFC come down here and visit the site. EFC is the funding mechanism. We borrow money from EFC in there, some of it is grant, most of it is borrowing at subsidized low interest under the name of the state, so we get very favorable interest rate. And for, for, for the Black Dirt Sewer, we got zero interest. So the state is subsidizing, paying the whole interest for the borrowing. So, on, on the 7th of this month, EFC dispatched one of their engineer, one of their project managers, to go and make sure that everything was done properly, so he visited each and every site, he reviewed the paperwork, he reviewed the posting, he was very happy with everything he saw. Whatever, whatever notes or comments he made, we addressed them right away, and he went back to Albany, with, I think he was very satisfied for those two projects. Woolworths project, the construction is moving along, and we're, we're taking care of construction issues, as you would expect, in an old building that we're trying to repurpose it, upgrade it, modify it, and so on and so forth. So we have, you know, a few, tons, I mean, several issues that appear, and we're dealing with them, and with the mayor, and with the board of estimate regarding the change orders, and then it comes to you guys for approval to the common council, and we appreciate that. Going back to the Black Dirt Sewer, about nine residents on Elm Street are getting temporary water, meaning they're supplied with water through above-ground piping, and they are required to boil their water. The mayor has directed us to issue or disperse water barrels to anyone that would require that, so they don't have to go through the pain of boiling their water before they drink it or use it for cooking. So, we are available, call DPW, we dropped like three cases at each house. If you need more, please call us at DPW, and we'll be very happy to do it. After that, the council and the mayor have approved installing a new water line, so we're working on replacing the entire water line in that, in Elm Street. We made the contractor pave half of it, so that the residents in there, just temporary pavement, like an inch, inch and a half of blacktop in there, just so that will minimize the dust from Manhattan Avenue to Knox, just to accommodate the residents in there, because it's a lengthy project, and it's, it's not an easy project. So, we apologize again for the inconvenience, the dust. We're trying to control it and stay on top of it. The courthouse, we haven't reported, federal courthouse, the mayor and I have been working with the new architect, he just reported to us today that they're moving along, they're making measure, they're making progress with the plans that they have. So that's another, you know, about two, a couple of million dollar project that is moving along. Before you tonight, you have Seeker, Secra in there to approve the city as determined as a city, for the city to be a lead agency, which is required, and that's for the 20-inch water main. And I reported on that before, but just to remind you, that will be a brand-new water line to replace almost 1900, 1920, 20-inch water line that supplies this third, one-third of the city with water, and that will come from the water treatment plant down to Manhattan Avenue, from 211 down to Manhattan Avenue, and will stop by the second, lower entrance of the former psychiatric center. And that will be phase one, that's about $3 million. Half of it is, half a million dollars is grant, the rest of it is going to be city, city funding. And that will be only phase one, and we desperately need phase two, which will go from the second entrance along Manhattan, and then turn up West Main Street, that's where we have our measured water main breaks sometimes, when they happen, and that's a major supply to the city. Once we do that, then we're going to turn our attention to the low pressure on the 24-inch gravity sewer, that is also extremely old and in need of attention. And also, you do get notification on our website, fire hydrants are being replaced almost on a daily basis, and I encourage people to subscribe to the mayor's phone texting, in Excel. That's what the mayor has, was pushing for, and it's really very efficient, it came to be very efficient. So whoever was, has subscribed for this service would have received a text from us telling them that Highland Avenue from certain location to certain location could have water interruption from 8 o'clock until 12 o'clock, because we will be replacing a fire hydrant at the corner of Highland and Wickham. So hopefully we don't have to interrupt the water, but just in case, we have distributed this message, phone message. So if you don't have it, please go to our website, follow the instruction, you will know how to get this text message, and that's an immediate notification in case we need to advise you of any event in the city, especially water interruption or road closure, or whatever, whatever we need to reach out to you for. It will be instantaneous, so you don't have to go to our website to search what is the latest notification. It's a very efficient way of reaching out to our residents. Roundabout project, it's moving along very well. Today, we implemented a new flow, a traffic flow pattern in there, so please just pay attention to it, because it's different from what it was yesterday and last week, and try to avoid the area, please, if you can, because of the congestion and, and safety of the workers. And with that, I will conclude. If you have any questions? The grass, we're catching up with the grass, and please cut your grass so that council president will not be mad at me. Otherwise, we'll cut it for you, and we'll issue fines, and we'll take you to court. So don't make us do that, please. Thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Commissioner, any update on New York Rising?
Yes, thank you. Well, they're going to kill me. So, New York Rising, the mayor, myself, and we met with the New York Rising team, which is the consultant, the project consultant, and representative of the governor. And... And it was a very constructive meeting in there, we went over the alternatives, they came up with the report, a huge report in there, making recommendations. Um, they had one item in their leftover, basically, which is the left un, unaddressed, which they're going to go back and address it, and we expect to have a final report in two weeks from them. And, uh, and that will include the final recommendations that they would recommend for us for the city of Middletown, and how to spend the three and a half million dollars in there from New York Rising to improve our, uh, drainage system between the Manhattan Brook and the Draper Brook. Basically, the Draper Brook, they're somewhat given up on it, all of it is underdesigned, so we're not going to do any, too much of a corrective action with the Draper Brook. It's going to be all focused on the Manhattan Brook, which is the major drainage way in the city. So hopefully in two weeks, we will get something more from them.
And we'll get the public involved?
Absolutely, absolutely. There's going to be a public outreach. Uh, the mayor and I talked about it, we're going to have one-on-one even, talking with the, with any potentially impacted property. We're going to sit down, talk to them one-on-one. Of course, the alderman of the area or anyone, any elected official is welcome, it's up to the mayor, but I don't think he'll have, you know, he'll address that. Yes.
Alderman Tobin?
Uh, the report that's coming out in two weeks, when will that be made to the public?
Uh, soon, uh, soon after.
Soon after?
Soon after, yes. I can't promise you exact time, but soon after. We should have had it, but then we, we wanted to tweak it a little bit more, to try to minimize the impact on, on, on private property, and that's why they had to go back and, to the drawing board, to be honest with you.
Alderman Joffe Swann?
Yes, Commissioner, the, uh, speed sign on Wayway Yonder in East Main. I know your department had already installed them, but they're actually not active. Do you have, uh?
Yes, two, two of them, one on, on Wayway Yonder, and the other one in West Main Street by Maple Hill, and the reason is it was software fault from the manufacturer, and we're waiting for them to give us that, uh, the software to upload it into the system. So that's why we installed it, the electrician has been there, everything is fired up, we just need to update the software so it will work.
Do you know, do you have an estimate on when?
No, I don't, I, I, I honestly have not asked, but I know they're trying to get it as much, as soon as possible, but I don't know the answer. I can get you the answer tomorrow. I will research it. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Thank you, Jacob.
Yeah, thank you.
Fire chief?
Uh, I don't, I don't have anything to say, unless anybody has anything.
Any question for the fire chief? City treasurer?
I, I have nothing else this evening, unless anybody has a question.
Alderman Massey?
Don, I just want to say, uh, congratulations on that wonderful report for your whole department and everything, uh, that's terrific, and I just had one little question. Uh, can you attribute any of that success to the chairman of the finance committee?
Actually, a fair amount. Joe, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up first.
Police chief?
Uh, good evening, thank you for allowing me to recognize my officers this evening, or my supervisors this evening. Um, just a couple of quick things, uh, I was remiss in the last meeting to recognize the Middletown Kiwanis for their donation to the community outreach program, uh, I'd like to publicly thank them, that does go a long way with help us, uh, with helping the police department do some more outreach into the community. Uh, the other thing I would like to just briefly touch upon, and I cannot give many details at all, but just a quick synopsis, is this afternoon, there's a, a lot of police activity on Peach Place. Uh, the reason being is we did have a barricade subject there, um, it was successfully resolved without injury, um, to the person involved, any of the police officers. We were, uh, joined there this afternoon by the sheriff's department, as well as New York State Police, and again, um, it was a successful outcome, which is the most important to me. Other than that, I have nothing unless anyone has a question for me.
Question for police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Corporation counsel?
I don't have anything more, unless anyone has any questions.
Any question for the new corporation counsel?
I guess. You've only got about five more minutes, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk?
Just the new website is up and running for the last, uh, about three weeks now. We had a couple of issues with the backend, but that was, it's been settled, and, uh, we're just, um, having the public, uh, make any comments if they have any issues with the website, but I haven't received any, so, so far, so good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Civil service?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, most people know that we're giving the police officers test on September, uh, 15th, the deadline is August 2nd. Uh, please, anyone that's going to apply, apply as quickly as possible, you, uh, please read the instructions, you have to bring a $40 money order, you have to have certain qualifications, uh, but the sooner you get it in, the better it, uh, it is for everyone. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearing agreements?
Nothing this evening.
Mayor?
I'm going to be as brief as Jacob, maybe go a minute or two longer, because I, I'm going to watch the tape, I thought he started it.
Three minutes, you only want three minutes.
My goodness. Uh, first, I'd like to, um, acknowledge the, uh, all the people who attended the dedication at Maple Hill Park on Sunday, June 10th, to, um, dedicate the playground and the new pavilion, uh, to our former corporation counsel, former, um, city court judge and special counsel to the city, Robert Nathan Isicks. Had almost 200 people there, it was a wonderful day, and, um, a lot of old Middletown that came back from many parts of the country, just to, um, pay honor to Bob and his memories. So, uh, thank, thank you to all who made it a, um, a special day, especially the Parks Department, Chris and John did a fantastic job in organizing along with Nicole. Uh, Maria did mention Three Dog Night, which we, uh, we did have a sellout for Three Dog Night at the Paramount Theater. It was a, a, a great show, uh, good reviews from people coming out. The Paramount has been very active all month with, um, not only private entertainment, uh, such as Three Dog Night, but we're also with the, um, rehearsals and ballets that have been going on. So, um, uh, we, we've had a pretty active downtown with that, Something Sweet and Festival Square now kicking off on Friday, Thursday nights and Friday nights with all the entertainment. We also had the Latin Festival this past weekend, successful in Thrall Park, a, uh, opening of Sixth West Main Street, uh, the barbershop, and also had, uh, many inquiries, uh, many, a lot of interest on the race for space. So we're hoping people will apply and participate in the program, because it's, um, an exciting opportunity to get your foot in the door with some state money, some free money for build-out, and also rent subsidy. Um, city also hosted the, um, Leadership Orange at the Paramount Theater for a conference and seminar, myself, Maria, and Caitlin attended, and we, uh, did a presentation on the DRI. Um, there's a lot of interest from, uh, people who are participating in the Leadership Orange program, and, uh, a, a lot of people really, open your eyes, they, we open their eyes when they show them the activity that's going on, um, in downtown. They also took a walk through the downtown area and witnessed firsthand the torn-up streets, but believe it or not, as much as we're frustrated by it, a lot of people see it as activity and see the beginning of what's going to come over the next 18 months to two years, with a huge investment of public and private dollars into the, into the downtown area. Uh, one thing Jacob mentioned on the sidewalks, I mean, on the Orange and Rockland issue, is that we will be paving, um, and, um, we've been back and forth on this. Uh, we don't think we want people to wait two to three years for paving to get done. So we will be paving, and then probably next year, or within next year or so, is doing sidewalks in downtown. So Jacob has assured me, the process is they cut, there's a saw cut, so we will not have to tear up those roads again. So, so, uh, so a few people who have mentioned it, um, have a legitimate concern, is why would you pave now, and then tear up the roads next year? Well, we're not going to be tearing up the roads. The sidewalks will be done in a manner that will require only a one-foot cut, I, I believe that's the number he gave me, but I'll let him verify that at the next meeting, or I can call him back up now to explain it. That would be torture, right? Um, the, I want to congratulate, uh, Lieutenant Tobin and Sergeant Hargit on their promotions, and, and the chief for the, uh, penning ceremony. I think it's, um, a good opportunity for the public to see how their taxpayers' money are being spent, um, and the pride we take in the Middletown Police Department and the job that they're doing. Um, uh, when I interviewed Sergeant Hargit, uh, not myself and the commission, um, he had a beard down to about here, and, uh, two days later, I had the, um, opportunity to be on a medical scene, in which he was the responding officer, and I basically said to somebody who was with me, is, "You get that guy's name, who is it? I, I don't recognize him at all." And of course, he had to shave his beard, but, uh, because he was in the Narco unit, as, as it was said, so. But, um, Mr. Massey did touch on, uh, the police test coming up, and we are hiring, um, right now. We're going to be doing interviews sometime in July. I believe we have, um, at least four vacancies, and we're going to be adding four positions because of the SRO issue and the school budget passed. So, uh, I don't know if we're going to hire all eight off the existing test, or wait, uh, depending upon, um, what we feel the best quality is for, for the city, but, uh, we, we have anticipate more retirements. Uh, Officer Mercado is retiring, I believe, on Thursday, uh, after Esteban Mercado, and he's been a fantastic officer with the city. So we have more vacancies coming, you know, we have a, a very young police department, the chief is really, um, giving them great guidance as, as we move forward, but there's also great opportunity for people, um, who, especially people who live here, to, uh, have a great career and to participate in city government and, and whatever manner they want, but in this case would be, um, would be as a Middletown police officer. Salary is not bad, it starts about 65, 66,000 per year, um, and well-deserved, but, um, please take Mr. Massey up at heart here with the, uh, to heart with, um, the opportunity to at least take the test, because like the lottery, if, if you're not in it, you can't win it. Uh, we attended, myself, Don, Janet, and Maria also attended a meeting up in Albany regarding the property tax issue and the charitable contribution. It seemed like a lot of people in the room were, um, angry at the state for giving this option, or trying to develop this option, um, and it was, being trying to convey, and I hope it's conveyed to the public accurately too, is the reason why the state is doing this creation of these charitable options is because the federal government changed the law, the IRS law, that, um, no longer allows for state and local taxes to be deductible. So you have to take it up with your own, you know, accountant, whether it's better to go to the, uh, standard deduction, which is increasing from 12,000 to 24,000 for a married couple, or to continue to itemize, but what we have to do as a, as a body, um, is decide whether we're going to opt into this program and create the charitable not-for-profits that will be the mechanism for people to be able to claim. It's not everyone, it's optional, even if the city opts in, it's an optional program for the individual, uh, whether they want to participate or not. It is quite confusing, there's no question about it. Uh, most of the states that are going to be doing this are having the same kind of problems of not only getting the, the tax collectors and the elected people to understand it, um, but also to get the accountants and the public to understand exactly what's going to be going on. So we will be, uh, providing you with information over the next several weeks on what we believe will be required of us in order to do this, um, opt into this state program, and, and then we'll have to make a decision whether, uh, one of the questions came up, whether it's going to require extra staffing and things of that nature. So, uh, we'll have to make that call when, when it comes, and I'm sure you'll all be, um, part of that process. Um, on June 29th, we have Jimmy Stir downtown. On June 30th, the fireworks at Davage, I don't remember the band's name at Davage, but it's a pretty well-known, popular band, obviously not as well-known that I would know the name, but it's, uh, I'm not really a band guy, but, uh, Maria can probably, well, it'll be posted on our website, uh, for everyone to see. Uh, Jacob mentioned tonight the, um, West Main Street and the, uh, the program and project that's been on forever. Dr. Johnson, Alderman Johnson, and, uh, Alderwoman Rampassoon, um, were kind enough to distribute meeting notices, uh, this past weekend to the neighbors in that area. Uh, myself, the council president, Rodriguez, and Commissioner Toewill, were up in the neighborhood last week looking at the progress being made, and a few of the neighbors had some concerns and questions, so we set up the public meeting, uh, we had Clark Patterson Lee here, the city engineers, to do a presentation and a PowerPoint, and to answer any and all questions that the neighbors had, and to try to appease them of the concern, of the concerns, or address their concerns. I think everyone left, um, I, hopefully left, um, more informed, and that we also will address some of the questions that they raised, but I, I want to thank the two of you for distributing the, uh, the notices and, uh, arranging for that meeting. This is the, um, grant that we were able to secure through, um, Congressman Maloney's office, the expedited additional community development block grant monies, and I believe it originally was three million, but now it's, uh, no, that was New York Rising, that's gone to three and a, three and a half million, but this is the West Main Street and the Maple Hill Project, uh, the two of them, the, the culvert, the repairing of the banks on the West Main Street, uh, Manhattan along West Main Street, and how much, under three million dollars, okay. And, uh, New York Rising, you brought up, Jerry, and I, I know that's gone from three to three and a half million dollars. So, um, the reason that the four proposals, everything that's being discussed in private sessions with the state and, um, representatives on New York Rising, will be furnished with you guys in the final report. So it's not like we're eliminating options. All options, once they're vetted, and, and are in the report, all the information is in there, will be presented to, uh, to the council. Not sure yet the process that's going to be established for selection, what option we're going to do, but the preliminary review is that some options cost more and some options cost less, have different impacts, some impact daylighting, uh, so we have a whole, um, well, at least four that we'll be choosing from, and it looks like that's the final four, but that's the process. It's not a, um, you know, who wants this project, I want the, the, the higher the engineers to come up with these proposals, and then we review the proposals with you, and I believe at the end, um, we get to make the selection, that's what I believe is going to happen. So, um, another project that's taken a while, if you remember Rich Mayfield, we chased him right out of the county. He is now the new, uh, director of the New York State USDA. He was the guy who we threatened to give out the phone number at every meeting, and when he finally got the job done, then he scattered out onto the county, and he went to work for the state. But at least we got our money, and the project is moving forward. And am I up to Jacob's time yet?
Yep.
I am, okay. So I'll call it quits and request an executive session for potential litigation. Yes, sir, Alderman Massey.
Either you or the chief of police, uh, about tomorrow night's function?
Tomorrow night's function, chief of police after, yeah, I'll have to give you, uh, Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, um, the Heritage Trail, you want to just, because we had to, had a meeting?
Yeah, um, I spoke with Steve yesterday, and I, I did attend the Trail Advocates meeting last Thursday, and advised him that we do have a settlement with the county. Um, this is the culvert, the infamous culvert, we had the meeting onsite, it's about a $600,000 job, at least that's what we project. We did appropriate, I believe at the last meeting, 49,000 for engineering, which has begun. Um, we need to sign the IMA, as you know, we have a transfer from Curtin over to Smith, Smith now has to sign off on it, and, um, Smith being Alex Smith, who you're going to hopefully appoint tonight, against my better judgment, but we're going to, um, hopefully have a signing ceremony, I believe, Thursday or Friday. If we don't have a ceremony, the city is prepared to sign and then send the documents down to the county. So that's the intermunicipal agreement between us and the county. Again, the numbers are, uh, Assemblywoman Gunther has produced a $200,000 grant, the city will be putting up $100,000, the county will be putting up $100,000, and the request has been made through the county for Senator Bonisick. through the county for Senator Bonisick to match Assemblywoman Gunther's grant, and if that comes through, then the money's there. If not, then we will have to eat the other 200,000 through our, through our programs. Not happy, but it is what it is. Yes, sir?
Well, I want to thank you. It feels like we've made progress on Heritage Trail. I might be kidding myself, but I want to thank you because you really put a lot of effort into moving the county into our, into our sphere of cooperation. I had a question on Race for Space. Do we have a timeline for when those businesses might actually be in place?
Well, the project is due to be completed in September, and I believe the applications are due in July, Maria, but she can give you more of an update.
I just don't know when they might be in place.
Yeah, yeah. She can give you an update on that, and the chief can address. I don't want to give you the wrong dates.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Am I? Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Massey. Just a lot of stuff went on today, so my mind's a little scrambled. But, tomorrow night is CRAZE training. We have partnered with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to bring a free training here to the Paramount Theater. It starts at 6:00 PM. CRAZE is civilian response to active shooter events. It's an informational training that gives people a better idea of how they can respond and what options are available to them if they're ever faced with some type of a hostile-type situation. So, when we talk about active shooters, we immediately think about school situations, but there's mall situations, there's office buildings, there's so many. There's open space areas where these things have happened, these tragic events have happened. So, the training tomorrow, which I encourage as many people to come out as they can, as I said, it is free. It'll give you a different thought process and some options to consider if you are ever faced, or maybe someone from your family to help educate them. So, again, I encourage everyone, and I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department for partnering with us to bring this training here to Middletown.
Thank you, Chief. Maria?
6:00 to 8:00 PM?
Yes, 6:00 to 8:00.
To answer your question on the timeline for Race for Space, we set out, set up some goals, deadlines. The application is due August 6th. Then, there's a selection process for the month of August and September, and we're looking toward the week of September 24th, and then no later than November 1st to execute contracts with the, the potential winners. And then, once we execute contracts, then they could begin construction, and we're hoping to have folks in there as early as the holiday season or in mid-January. So, depending on what the business is going to be and what type of build-out they're going to be required.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Marks of Alderman, Alden Burr.
Yes. I'd like to congratulate the officers on their promotions and the chief for the pin ceremony. It's very nice to see them get recognized in the city. On the Isaacs dedication, I want to hats off to Chris and Bianchi to get the park up to a great condition with all the construction being done over there. It really turned out to be a gorgeous day. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes, I want to co-sign today. Congratulations to two officers that got promoted this evening, Officer Tobin and Sergeant Harden. Job well-deserved. These are the officers that keep our city safe, and, and we definitely encourage them to keep doing a well job. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Yes, congratulations to both officers. They're both excellent. And I also want to congratulate the police department and the chief. They were, I believe, honored by Honor Emergency Housing and for really above and beyond help and cooperation. So, thank you, chief. Also want to congratulate Don and, you know, the, his whole department that, that was really to hear, it was encouraging to hear how well they've done and how cooperative they were, and it's a, it's a real feather in their cap. So, thank you.
Alderman.
Good evening. First order of business, just a reminder that the, there are Third Ward constituent meeting will be next Tuesday here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. It's also the night before my birthday, so I, gifts or cake, both are fine. My congratulations to Lieutenant Tobin, Sergeant Hargit on their promotion. Sergeant Hargit, all I've heard are positive things about him. Have the pleasure of knowing Lieutenant Tobin, who not only does great police work in his role as an officer here in Middletown, but also volunteers his time back to the community, and we're always seeing him at a cleanup or anyplace else he can be. So, he's just a great part of our community. For the audit, congratulations to our finance department and our finance chair, I guess, right? We're going to give you credit for that tonight. See? You got it. That was on television, by the way. I ran the Ruthie run. Thanks, Dave Madden. That's your fault. The weekend before last survived. Considering I finished within sight of Officer Beebe, I'm going to call that a huge success. But, it's another nice community event where our local businesses step up and are a big part of our community, which I expect them to be as well for Night Out, which is coming up soon, and the planning for that is underway. So, if anybody has any interest in participation, they can just reach out and contact me. As for the meeting tonight about West Main and Maple Park, this is a long time coming. You don't realize how huge the scope of the project is until they showed up with the pieces of the Culvert, and you're like, oh, my God, this is enormous. I can understand why a lot of the people who live there were a little nervous about what was going on. So, my thanks to you, Mayor, and Jacob, and Council President Rodriguez for pulling this meeting together because I think everyone left happy and reassured, and my thanks to Clark Patterson and the contractors there because they're just really great with the neighbors, and I think everyone really has a lot of their fears, you know, put, put to rest by them being there and being really responsive. So, my thanks for that, and that is all I have tonight. So, have a good evening.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. Congrats as well to law enforcement. That's a top-shelf organization in my book, and I appreciate that. You know, I think we made great strides in the Third Ward in the last week or so. I did get to go door-to-door on behalf of Kate and myself on Elm and Knox, and people were cordial. They were appreciative. The remark I made to those folks is that my life experience suggests that success is 90% communication and 10% outcome. And, on Elm Street in particular, for the short term, that's been a great inconvenience, and people would like to know what is happening. They would like to know why it's happening, and they would like to know what to expect. And I think that's where older persons really come in, to fill that void of communication. And, it's a big mess, and it's been a lot longer than anticipated. And I think the same is true for West Main. That's been six years, not six weeks. But, it's the same thing. Kate and I, we've spoken to many of these people over the years, and it's just what is going to happen and when is it going to happen? It's not so much that I didn't get this or I got that. And it's just human nature. You want to know, you know, when the water is turned off, is it going to be for four hours? Is it going to be for four days? Do I have to go to Grandma's house? Can I cook dinner? And I think, I think we should continue to try to fill that void to the best of our ability. I think it makes people feel more comfortable with living in the Third Ward, the best Ward. Thank you.
Aldman Green.
Thank you. Just also, congratulations to Lieutenant Tobin, Sergeant Hargit on two very well-deserved promotions. It was also at the Isaacs Pavilion dedication. Thank you to everyone there. It was a really great event. What a beautiful park. You know, we're very lucky to have such a great staff in parks and certainly all the, all the parks for our children. As well as things to do, it was a very busy weekend in the city. I don't know if I heard anyone mention that it was The Lion King on King Street on Saturday night, and there was an amazing crowd. I wasn't able to actually make it for the movie, but I did drive by because I just wanted to see the whole setup. And it, really, if you haven't been, it's a fantastic setup down there, and it looked like it was such a great crowd and certainly a beautiful night for it. And during the day, again, on Saturday, the festival, the Latino Festival, I skipped breakfast because I knew I was going to eat for a couple days' worth, and I definitely did. It's, it's something I look forward to. And, again, the city's just bursting with things to do. So, thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
I'd like to congratulate the officers on their promotion and thank the finance department for their great job on the clean audit.
Alderman Massey.
Nothing this evening.
New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson-François to concur with the mayor's appointment of Dave Madden to the planning board to replace the term of Paul Thorne, term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson-François, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve the zoning change of seven properties to the DMU zone.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve the zoning change of seven properties to the DMU zone.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve the zoning change of 23 properties to the C2 zone.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to provide a police escort to the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Society procession on Sunday, July 15th, commencing at 5:45 PM.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson declaring the intent of the common council to act as lead agency for water system improvements for Monhegan Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Johnson-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve the zoning change of 23 properties to the C2 zone.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to restructure the office of Corporation Council of the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Unanimous.
Make it unanimous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All for local laws.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited. The claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrant for the payment.
Resolution by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Roll.
Rampassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
No move.
Oh, we got all of them, sorry?
Yeah, you got it.
Does the president like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion